... Body.
So you'll, you'll know if the PowerPoint's queued up because you'll see it on that screen.
I see.
All you have to do is go forward and you can reverse.
Oh.
It's just click the button forward.
No different from my computer, just touch it.
Yeah, so just at the end of the meeting, make sure we get to your...
And everybody's got it on the screen here?
Yeah, they'll have it on the screen as well. Yeah?
Well, that's very good, thank you.
Alright.
I appreciate your help, really do.
Alright.
Oh, so you've got yours too?
Yeah.
A little, a little practicing to do now.
Yeah, yeah, we were, we were kind of filling through it over there and said, "No, we'll stay with the book tonight."
I have never used, I mean, I haven't seen other...
Bar.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Like Larry Huber.
Thank you, my friend.
Yeah, you're good looking.
Oh my God, I know if Larry was here, he'd say, "Ow, I think that hurt."
Well, good evening, everyone. I will go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting of December 12th, 2018 to order. Roll call, please.
Chair Kurth.
Here.
Vice Chair Porter.
Here.
Commissioner Marsh.
Here.
Commissioner Dew. Commissioner Hoover. Commissioner Hoover is marked absent.
Thank you. Time for our invocation and pledge of allegiance, if you'll please rise. Before we start the invocation, recently, our community lost a great father, a good businessman, and a former planning commissioner. I would like to take a moment of silence in memory of Bob Wilson. Thank you. And we pray. Lord, we come to you during this holiday season in thankfulness for the opportunities and the freedoms that this country offers. We ask for your guidance and your blessing over this meeting so that the decisions that are made are in the best interest of this city and our citizens. Bless everyone here and keep them safe through the holiday season. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in liberty and justice for all.
We have a set of minutes from the November 14th, 2018, meeting that need to be dealt with.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dew with a second by Vice Chair Porter to approve the minutes of the November 14th, 2018 Regular Planning Commission meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with Agenda Item Number One, Staff Report, please.
Thank you Chairman Kurth, fellow commissioners. Item number one is Case PLAN 18-00041. It is a three-year extension of time for a tentative parcel map 19595 for the creation of two single-family residential lots from one existing parcel with an environmental exemption. This is located on Sunny Vista Road north of Mojave Drive. The applicant's requesting this extension, which will afford them additional time to record the parcel map. This was originally approved in September 2015. The parcels are roughly around a half acre in size. They're surrounded by parcels that are mainly in the acre range. However, the zoning does allow for, all the way actually down to 7,200 square feet, it's just a normal R1 zone. But we feel, as we stated in the September 2015 approval, that this subdivision still respects the neighborhood in the fact that most of the street frontages will be about the same width. As you can see from the aerial graphic here, this, this parcel has, this existing parcel has a large frontage along Sunny Vista. So from the street view, it'll look like these parcels are somewhat the same size as the neighborhoods, it'll fit with the character of the neighborhood. And again, this is just a time extension, but the Planning Commission does have full discretion with these maps as they come back for these extension requests. And we're available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak to us on item number one? Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to the commission for a decision.
I move to find the project categorically exempted Act entitled Minor Land Divorce and adopt Planning Commission Resolution. Subject to all conditions of approval.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Dew to approve Case PLAN 18-00041 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Two, please.
Thank you Chairman, item number two is Case PLAN 18-00045. It is a site plan with a categorical exemption to allow for an approximate 3,700 square foot remodel and 2,400 square foot addition for a new restaurant at the Green Tree Inn. This is located at 14173 Green Tree Boulevard. The applicant's requesting this expansion to allow for the Sundowners Family Restaurant to occupy the main front entrance area of the Green Tree Inn. As you can see on this graphic, the main addition would take place in the front court drive yard area. It would enclose that area with a new elevation. We, we brought this forward to the Planning Commission. Right now, the plans, we don't have all of the details of the plans, but what we do have before you is a rendering of, of what the elevation would look like. The applicant tried to incorporate some elements that would fit within that mid-century style that would also complement the Green Tree Clubhouse, which was recently remodeled. We also wanted to bring this forward to the Planning Commission since it's normally something that could be handled at a staff level, but due to the site's history and its prime visibility, and also the fact that they're requesting a phased approach to this remodel, we thought it was pertinent to bring it before the commission for review. What the applicant's requesting is just to first start with the restaurant. That would include the remodel of that front area, kind of like the prime corner. And then it would also include some site plan improvements around the frontage, so new parking landscaping, but that wouldn't include the entire parcel. Over time, there would be more improvements to the site, but for this first phase, they're asking for just that prime corner to be redeveloped. And then eventually, their plans is to bring it into more of like, I think they dubbed it the Green Tree Experience. And the applicants here today, I think you can provide some more feedback on their ultimate goals for the site. But as it's packaged for you today, staff is comfortable with you conditioning it, approving it with these conditions, if you're okay with the direction that they're taking. And then staff can finalize the, the remaining outstanding plans with them. So we're available if you have any questions.
Thanks. Any questions?
Just one Scott, on the, on the elevation, I think that looks nice. Because you explained that this is phased, you know, upgrades and development, this, do you believe that this will substantially or identically be the way it's built, the way it'll be on plans?
Yes, I think the, the architect will, will be submitting plans that'll, that'll do their best to match that rendering. But I need to, I, I need to make clear that the, that since it's phased, you'll see the older portions of the building there. So I just want the planning commission to be aware of that, that there'll be portions that are remodeled, but some of the older portions of the building will still remain as is. So we'll work with the applicant, if it's approved, to kind of like make a seamless transition, so it's not as, as abrupt, as abrupt from the current design to the existing. But it is what, how they're going about the remodel, it's, it's just a phased approach at this point.
Such as the, the brewery and family dining might come later, and that's on the front of the building?
That'll come later and that'll include additional remodeling to the exterior.
Okay, thanks. I'll open up the public hearing. Hello.
Hi, I'm Val Christensen. 19250 Bear Valley Road, Apple Valley. And pardon me, I was shooting shotguns a few days ago without any ear, and I'm having a hard time hearing you, so. But they'll fix it, I'm sure. In any event, I'm here as the consultant to get the Sundowners built and developed. I'm, I built the Denny's that's across the street and operated that back in the 90s. And the owner of Sundowners discovered that and recruited me, I guess you could say, to help make this project happen. So, that's what Sundowners does. I guess it's on your screen as well as what I can see up there. And they're proud that they sell that one pound porterhouse steak for $13.99 all day, every day. I'm not going to talk about the development of the project. The architect, Ryan McGowan, should be here, any moment, I hope, and talk about that. I'm going to tell you about Sundowners and what it is. Sundowners functions operates within the fast casual segment of the restaurant industry. Fast casual segment is made up of concepts such as Panera, Panda, Chipotle's, Baja Fresh, Five Guys, and lots of other up and coming restaurants, chains. But what is fast casual? It's generally considered a little upscale from fast food. However, it has no table service, customers work down a line like they do at Chipotle's or Panda. Make an order, collect what they want, come to the end of the line, pay, and seat themselves. Generally, everything involved is, is fresh, produced, good product. The interesting thing about fast casual segment, it is less than 8% of the total restaurant industry in the state, or in the country, pardon me, but in recent years, it's seen over 500% growth, which is amazing. If you look at that little chart, you can see full service in the United States, fast food, and fast casual occupies about 7.7%. But look at the sales. Fast casual has seen a 13.5% increase in sales across the country, while all the others combined have seen less than 6%. I think that's interesting. Sundowners mission statement, what we do, we're committed to our customer, our goal is to welcome, take care of all of the customers, and have them enjoy the best experience we can offer them. I want to introduce you to Blanca. Blanca is an employee at Sundowners. Blanca came to this country at two years old. She had no choice. Her parents brought her to this country without any documentation. Blanca came to work at Sundowners roughly 18 years ago. Blanca came to work at Sundowners roughly eighteen years ago. She was not a legal citizen in the United States. But I will report to you today, with Sundowners' help and contribution financially and other ways, Blanca is a citizen in the United States of America. And I'm excited about that because I think that's part of what we should do as business people. Sundowners in Victorville will bring about seventy-five new jobs. The policy of Sundowners is to never pay minimum wage but always pay more. The averaging of an hourly employee is about eighteen fifty an hour. While that's not all the money in the world, that's a little better than most restaurants pay. The interesting thing is, the general managers of Sundowners, they take about six figures a year, so they're well compensated. The old idea of, and I'm offended by it, I had a lot of restaurants in my past, when a guy says, "Well, if you're going to fail in life, you're a burger flipper," I'm kind of offended by that statement. I've been a burger flipper ever since I opened the Denny's across the street. We ended up with twenty Denny's restaurants across four states, in addition to a lot of Del Tacos. I still flip burgers, and I'm okay with that. And I think my employees are too. The company also, besides paying them well, we reimburse employees. If they choose to take college credit classes, we reimburse them for the cost of going to that college. Sundowners is working with community colleges, San Bernardino Valley College, Victor Valley College. I had the opportunity several years ago of serving as president of Victor Valley College Foundation for several years, and it exposed me to a, well, a need in the community. We would try to hire graduates from their culinary program, and quite honestly, they were un-hireable. They didn't know anything, they couldn't do anything, and it's not the students' fault. I felt that the college failed them by not preparing them to go out in the workforce. We have now partnered with them to develop a quality restaurant management program. I certainly can't teach them how to cook because I don't know how to cook. I can't teach them anything about recipes, but hopefully, we can teach them how to read a financial statement, how to budget, how to schedule, how to local store marketing, how to forecast, and how to deal with human resources. Those things we can teach them. We have partnered also with companies like Baja Fresh and Cheesecake Factory. They will take all the managers we can produce. Cheesecake Factory, the senior management there are friends of mine, they would have more cheesecake factories across the country. They can't find the managers to run. That's their difficulty. When you finish with our program, you'll either receive a two-year certificate, or if you take all the other classes in the school, in the college, you'll graduate with an A A in restaurant management. Again, we're excited about being able to do that. But another part of what Sundowners does in our business plan is to have, see, the restaurant business is really kind of a crummy business for an employee. You work there for ten, twenty, thirty, forty years, and when you're done, somebody pats you on the back and says, "Thanks." That bothers me a great deal. We change that. Our employees, if they choose to, can become owners of their own Sundowners. To become a franchisee in a Denny's or a Del Taco, you have to have a net worth of at least a million dollars, you have to have three hundred thousand of that liquid, and you have to have a seven-twenty credit score. Not a lot of our managers can do that. As a matter of fact, I don't think any of them can, but they can get some money together. And we can partner with them that over a five-year program, they can end up owning their own Sundowners restaurants. We believe it's important that we give opportunities to people so they can change their life. The picture you see there is a guy that was just told about this program, and he said, "I'm in." He's excited. This is a guy that has been in and is moving towards owning his own restaurant. Talk about what we put together. That's a few of the baked potatoes. We go through, one location goes through eight thousand baked potatoes a week. It goes through fifty tons, fifty tons of top sirloin steaks. That's a lot, by the way. That's every week what we do. You look here, the ingredients that Sundowners offers are always fresh, always fresh. We think that's important. Our hamburgers, always fresh, never frozen. You know, it's interesting, that hamburger, by the way, sells for three ninety-nine. We're proud of that, too. See, most restaurants are looking for ways to raise their guest check average. We have a really odd meetings when our management meets. We're looking for ways to find a way to lower our guest check average so we can feed and treat and take care of more customers. That hamburger that you see there is made up of, we grind it, and it's made from the steak trimmings from the steaks that we cut go into that hamburger. So it's a pretty good quality product. Our menu, as you can see, there's a lot of items on it, it's very extensive, and notice down in the lower left-hand corner what it says, no tipping. There is no servers, there's no tipping. Our average check for a party of three is under eighteen dollars. We feed good, hard-working, blue-collar people. That's our demographic, our customer. That's one of our specials. St. Louis ribs for ten forty-nine, and this one you just looked at, that's been on special for about three years. Two top sirloin steaks for thirteen ninety-nine, anytime we're open. I had a guy come in not long ago and say, "You need to do couponing." We didn't do any couponing. So I said to him, "You really know our business?" He says, "I really do. I've really studied a lot." I said, "So what you think I should do is tag and sell one top sirloin steak for thirteen ninety-nine and use a coupon to get one for free." He said, "That's a great idea." I let him go. There was no, you understand, we don't do coupons, and we can't afford to do coupons. We anticipate contributing to Victorville about thirty-five thousand dollars a year in sales tax. Sundowners winds up with being probably seventy-five new jobs, helps employees with education, trains managers for good jobs, helps employees become owners, provides quality, fresh, affordable, and improves and adds to the city's, and this is an important one, improves the gateway to, I think it is the gateway, Green Tree is without a doubt, the gateway to this community. People love Sundowners. If you were to go on Yelp, you'll see we've got a four-point-five rating, which is pretty high. We think it's pretty good, and we think Sundowners would be a great addition to our community. It'll be right on the corner, you cross that bridge, you look right into that building. That's it.
Thank you for that. Now we're all hungry.
I can't answer. Good. Listen, Jern.
Any questions from the commission?
Is the Crown and Sword Room going to stay at the Green Tree? Is the Crown and Sword Room going to stay at Green Tree also?
The Crown and Sword Room, from what I know, understand, I'm the Sundowners portion. The Crown and Sword Room has been closed for quite a while now. And the owner asked me to look at Crown and Sword as well as the banquet space and use that equipment, and I went through there and said, "I don't think so." The equipment, see, I came to town before Victorville was incorporated. Maybe not. I moved to Apple Valley in March of nineteen sixty-two. I've been here a long time. Crown and Sword used to be the only place you could go. It's been closed a long time, the equipment's all broken and worn out, and I think Crown and Sword will fade into someplace.
Thank you, Mr. Christiansen.
I just had one quick question. How many Sundowner locations?
There are two currently. The one in San Bernardino, one in Fontana. The current owners have owned the company for two years. Sundowners has been in business there for thirty-seven years. The owner retired due to health reasons, so I don't think he would have retired. He got to where he couldn't drive himself. He had to have a driver, and it just wasn't practical to operate the restaurants any longer. While serving as president of Victor Valley College Foundation, we looked at Sundowners or to copy Sundowners as a revenue source for the foundation. Foundations get a lot of money, but it's not all of it's discretionary money. If we could, and because the state of California and federal have developed the B Corporation, where if nonprofit can own a profitable business, we went to work and said, "Why don't we buy or do something like Sundowners?" The seller wasn't interested, time went by, he calls and says, "Hey, we are interested." Now by then, the board at the college had changed, and they weren't interested. So we put together a group that bought the Sundowners with basically the same kind of ideas. We are going to help employees become college students, help them become owners, and help them become something more than a busboy. Recently, as an example, in a conversation with a forty-four-year-old man that's been a busboy at Sundowners for eighteen years, he's got kids graduating from high school. A month ago, he became a manager. Now, he's excited. His kids can come to work and talk to their father for the first time in eighteen years. When he got that promotion, I will tell you, tears were running down his cheeks because that's never happened to a guy like him before. Jesus has never had that opportunity. We give those kind of opportunities to quality people, and they love it. You see, how much harder they work, not harder, that's the wrong word, the quality of their work. When you walk in as a customer, they've got skin in the game. They are part of that company, and it makes a big difference. It truly makes a big difference. So I'm excited to build a Sundowners in Victorville.
I have questions that possibly you can't, like to ask these questions just for the record.
Certainly.
How do you intend to be successful here in the city of Victorville? Have you did a case study of some sort, considering your competition?
Yes, absolutely. Understand, I built the Denny's across the street, opened that in nineteen eighty-nine. That was the first Denny's restaurant I was ever involved in. I was the franchise owner while I operated that Denny's. To be a little boastful here, it was the highest-volume Denny's on the planet. An average Denny's in eighty-nine, ninety in those years did about a million dollars a year in sales. Victorville did three-point-six million a year in sales. That led to Barstow, it led to Apple Valley, Rancho Cucamonga, and a lot of others. So I feel I have a little background in the food service industry since that time. Now, looking at the competition, I don't want to be too boastful, but if I was the competition, I'd be quaking in my boots if Sundowners opened next to me because I can outprice them and sell the same quality for a lot less money. We service a community of, well, how do we say it, blue-collar, hard-working people. Mom and dad both work. It's very hard for them to sometimes put dinner on the table. Our customer is one that probably can go to Chili's or Applebee's a couple of times a year, birthdays, special occasions. They can afford to come to us every week, all the time, because of our pricing. You saw the price of that hamburger, three ninety-nine.
You indicated you've been here since nineteen sixty-two?
Sorry?
You indicated you have been here in the Victor Valley since nineteen sixty-two, I believe?
I'm having a hard time hearing you. I apologize. It's my fault, not yours.
I think that you indicated that you have been in the Victor Valley or in Apple Valley since nineteen sixty-two. I didn't write it down.
March of sixty-two.
Okay, okay. With that said, are you familiar with that, some time ago, that the Green Tree Hotel had a real thriving restaurant within there for several years? In fact, buses going to Las Vegas would stop there. Are you aware of that, correct?
Am I ever? When I built the Denny's, I felt they were my number-one competitor.
Okay.
Absolutely.
With that said, do you have any clue, I know you're not the owner, do you have a clue why, when their restaurant failed, well, it's not successful because you can't predict when it's going to be open or if it's open, the one that's connected to the hotel?
I think, personal opinion, I have nothing to base it on except what I know about the current owner. There's been, the Tatum's built the place in the sixties, right? Okay, Tatum's are friends of mine. They built it in the sixties. Time went on, they, I believe, built the golf course, et cetera, et cetera. The history of the golf course I'm aware of and so forth. It got sold to various different owners. Somebody along the line, I don't know who, had the great idea of bringing, have you been in the Green Tree recently? It's got couches that are this tall.
Yes, I have. I've seen those.
All that beautiful rock work where the fireplace was, somebody painted it shiny black. It looks like a hood of a fifty-six Buick. What the heck are we doing that for? All that beautiful, I remember when Tony Piazza's office was in there, when the gift shop was in there, Irene Somerset was in there. These were all quality places. I would be, I don't know what word to use, I wouldn't bring a business customer to Green Tree today. I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't walk him into that restaurant. There's no booths, they pulled out all the booths. You've got tables that are this thick for some reason with very uncomfortable chairs. It is not a place that says, "Hey, come on in and enjoy breakfast, lunch, or dinner." It's a place that comes in and said, "Well, I'm going to tell you what I think it says." I think they do.
I think I read you loud and clear.
The way it is, it will never succeed the way it is. Two months ago, they were trying Indian food, now they've got tacos in there, all that goes away when Sundowners is open, all of it.
Is Sundowners independent of the Green Tree Hotel owner? I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Is Sundowners independent from the Green Tree owner establishment?
There is some ownership from the Green Tree ownership into Sundowners, yes, but not all of it. He's a partner, the guy that owns all of Sundowners, pardon me, all of Green Tree, is a partner in Sundowners. So to be honest, if we were to try to build a brand-new building and pay new real estate costs for construction and land, Sundowners couldn't do it. Because the prices are so low and so incredibly low, our business model says we want to go find vacant buildings that failed. Maybe a vacant Blockbusters, a Hollywood Video, those kinds of buildings are what we will look for that are large, five, six thousand square feet, that we can get for very low rent.
Okay. Because you mentioned something about students, and I've served on two school boards, I would like to invite you to engage the superintendent of Victor Valley Union High School District because they do have a culinary program, and it's quite successful, and I invite you to do that, and I want to thank you for your petition here with the city of Victorville.
I'd love to have an interview. Because as of Friday of last week, I can hire seven people. We've got ads on the internet, Craigslist, and various other places. We also do an email weekly, and it isn't that I'm not getting qualified applicants, nobody is applying. Unemployment is so low, apparently, that anybody that wants a job can get a job today. I'll tell you that. So if you've got students at Victor Valley, send them over. We'd love to talk to them.
I want to thank you for your petition in the city of Victorville. Now you go back, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Christiansen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to us on agenda item number two? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to find the project categorically exempt under section fifteen three oh one of the California Environmental under Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, entitled "Existing Facilities" and Adopt Resolution Number P-18-068, approving site plan case number PLAN 18-00045, subject to the attached conditions of approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marsh with a second by Commissioner Dew to approve case PLAN 18-00045 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
It's been approved. Thank you. You're welcome. Item Number Three, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Agenda Item Number Three is planning case number PLN 17-00031. It's a tentative tract map with a mitigated negative declaration to allow for the recordation and development of a 132-lot, single-family residential subdivision with 7,200-square-foot minimum lot sizes on an approximately 3.6-acre building site. This map is proposed in two phases, due mainly to the availability of sewer in the area and the topography on site. Although it's proposed in two phases and Phase Two may have some difficulties in the future connecting the sewer because of the necessity to deal with Caltrans and install sewer in that right-of-way, it is designed to function as two separate maps if needed. All the amenities, including the dual-use detention basins, entry features and so on and so forth, are included with the first phase. As you may recall, this item was continued several times due to processing and traffic impact analysis with Caltrans. That issue has since been resolved. And in conjunction with Conditions 26 through 41, which are a result of the mitigated negative declaration, Condition 42 has been added to address Caltrans concerns, which sufficiently resolves their issues noted when they reviewed the TIA. We also receive comments from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, which have been resolved through Conditions 43 and 45, being added after the item had been passed through the SEQA review process. Those conditions are in relation to a jurisdictional delineation report, which essentially will outline the waters that traverse the site, ensure the project does not encroach into those waters, and ensure that any applicable approval authority is given the opportunity to comment and permit anything that would go on in those watercourses. As proposed and as conditioned, the map is in full conformance with Title 16, the Development Code, as well as the Single Family Design Guidelines. It meets minimum lot dimensions, usable area, dwelling unit density. And additionally, regarding the Single Family Design Guidelines, it includes lot designs such as cul-de-sacs that end in pie-shaped lots, dual-use drainage facilities, and landscape entry features that are designed to work in conjunction with drainage facilities along those rightaways. And there's also some miscellaneous conditions included to address additional drainage and entry features in open space. As conditioned, staff finds that it meets the requirements of Title 16 and supports its approval as conditioned.
Thanks. Any questions of staff? Okay. I'll open up the public hearing on Agenda Item Number Three.
Good evening, Commissioner Kirsch. Members of the commission, my name is Bo Cooper, the entitlement manager with United Engineering Group, here representing the project, finally. I want to thank Alex for sticking with us through the process as well and getting through with our Caltrans comments and finally getting all done and getting PLN 17 on the 2018 agenda. We have reviewed all the conditions. We've worked pretty closely with staff to get everything buttoned up and get in front of you. So the property owner and applicant, Andrew Pham with ACTK, is also here if you have any questions for him. And available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak to us on Agenda Item Number Three? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, we'd like to move to adopt the mitigated negative declaration with a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project and adopt Resolution P-15055, approving tentative tract map case number PLN 17-00031, subject to all conditions of approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Porter with a second by Commissioner Dew to approve case PLN 17-00031 as conditioned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
It's been approved. Item Number Four, do we need to open up a public hearing? Or is this officially continued or is this just for notification?
It's actually not a public hearing, so you can just take it as information and move on.
Okay. Well, we'll be looking at the updated rules at our next meeting. At this time, in compliance with the Brown Act, it's necessary for the Planning Commission to make available time for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of interest that fall within our subject matter jurisdiction. Please limit length of comments to three minutes. And I have two cards here. I have Mary Sexton first. Would you like to come up?
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. I live at one, on Rainwood Court here in Victorville. We got notification that a vacant lot next door to us, right next to our plan, that tonight was supposed to be a public hearing at City Hall on December 12, 2018 at 5:00 p.m. and the case is Plan 17-00013.
Is that one we've heard or was projected?
Here's the paper. It's not mine, it's my neighbor's.
Yeah, this item actually will be scheduled, I believe, for the January hearing. I apologize, yeah, this was inadvertently noticed. Yeah, my apologies, yeah, there was an issue with the State Clearinghouse routing on this. But yeah, you could still give, you could still give public comments since it's not on the agenda. And it may be helpful that we can address any issues. It would be helpful to have your comments so we can address any issues before it comes to the January hearing. So yeah, please feel free. No, yes, please, please.
You can, you can give us comments on this. It's not on the agenda, we can't deliberate it, and we don't even have anything in front of us as a commission.
No, I understand.
To know, but you're, feel free to give us your info.
And we're here is because we all have comments and questions. But we will come back. But the one thing that I wanted to talk about or tell you about is on the lot in question or on this paper, there are transients living there. And sometimes they come, sometimes they go. One is right behind my property, right on the other side of the wall, that divides that lot from my house. They have not given me any problems. I don't hear them. I can't smell any cooking, nothing like that. The thing that concerns me so much is if one, two, or three coming, how many more are coming? And what kind of problem is that going to create for that whole area? And I came tonight to let the people who were representing the owners know that this is going on so that the owners could do something about it. So I don't know that the city can. I have contacted the police and I have contacted code enforcement about it. And I don't know what else to do. We're a senior community and to have transient people on the other side, right now it isn't a problem, but it could continue and turn into a great problem, not only for us but for the city of Victorville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'm assuming that we're familiar on a staff level with the PLN 13 in the Rainwood area and might be able to...
Yes, and we will, we will follow up before the January hearing and make sure that we have active code enforcement in the area.
Okay. I have another card from Scott Sprague.
Probably the questions can't be addressed until, until we have the meeting in January.
There's going to be, yeah, there's going to be more discussion then. But you know what? We do thank you for coming out and giving us that information. Staff did just say that they're going to work with code enforcement again between now and then.
You have no idea because you don't have anything in front of you if this is going to be a gated community, this new community? Because they're going to have a country club and a pool.
If I may, I will, I can meet with you after the meeting to kind of give you the particulars of the project. If that helps.
I mean, whatever we can find out, I mean, we're going to obviously come back in January.
It's still in the process at the staff level. They definitely probably have a handle on it by now. And we really apologize that there was a misnotice, that you guys had to give up part of your evening tonight. We're sorry. And, you know, hopefully we'll see you the next meeting.
Dude make us hungry.
Yeah, that too.
Presentation.
That too.
Is he still around? Maybe I can get a dinner?
It was a double whammy there.
But it was interesting. It kept me awake, so that was good. We'll be back in January.
Thank you.
Okay. Will we get something, we'll be getting something in the mail again in January?
Yes, because it was my understanding that it didn't go out, that notice didn't go out, but apparently a portion of it did. So we'll renotice and, but we can work on some of the issues that you brought up today in the meantime. But yeah, please, please wait and I'll, I can fill you in a little bit more about the project.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and that's, that should do it. Comments from Commissioners, starting Commissioner Marsh?
No comments, just wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Mr. Porter? Commissioner Dew?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I appreciate you making your comments and observation regarding our former chairman, Bob Wilson, because, you know, public service is a, in itself is an honor to serve others. And I believe that Commissioner Wilson did an outstanding job in doing so and working with his colleagues and working with the staff. And he's a prime example. And I'm sitting with examples of how to be a Commissioner. And so I applaud you and your recognition of him. And I applaud the service of what the Planning Commission is doing. And I look forward to more successes the following year and years to come. Thank you.
And any questions or updates from staff?
I can report that the Old Town Specific Plan was approved by council. It goes to second reading next week. So we look forward to moving forward with the implementation of that plan. The, I think I updated you that there was an appeal hearing for that freeway sign, but the appellant withdrew that application. So that project does stand approved.
Okay, thanks. And with that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I'll see you all back here in 2019.